The 2025 budget, this is CIP night. Councilmember Stevenson will be just a few minutes late. He's on his way. And City Manager Roloff's not feeling the best, so he's joining us virtually this evening. With that, I'll hand it over to Mark and then I think Julie takes it from there.
Yeah, I'll just get started, Mr. Mayor. Julie and I have already talked through the presentation. So we're going to give an overview on the second slide here. We're really focusing on the impact of the CIP on our debt, because that's a huge part of it, as well as utility rates. Because those are what in large part fund a good portion of our CIP. There's other funding sources as well, and Julie will get into that. But you can see that the debt margin and a new thing is more how this is going to have an impact on our levy limits. So just be aware that that's a relatively new phenomenon, how it's impacting us. And Julie will get into that. One of the things we want you to focus on, focus on the plan, not necessarily the projects, although you can see all the department heads are here, happy to answer questions you might have about the different projects. And the document itself has detail on the major capital projects, as well as the financial summaries in the front. So we'll do that, make a presentation and then answer questions that council may have about the CIP. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Finance Director Julie Comas.
Let me share my screen quick. All right, so we're looking at the 2025 to 2034 CIP plan. So like Mark just discussed, we want to keep, start with a broad summary with how the capital improvement plan directly impacts the tax levy and the debt. So first off, you have all your funding sources. So I know we'll be sent home binders for the council members to look to. We also have a PDF packet that we included in the packet online. So funding sources, the first page was the funding source summary, which lists a bunch of different funding sources. The primary funding sources will be utility debt, which will be revenue bonds backed by the water, sewer and stormwater rates, general obligation debt, which is mostly backed by tax levy. You also have some projects funded through the tax levy. We are also trying to utilize some prior year funding from bonds. So you will see that also as a funding source. So some projects that came in under budget are now going to be reutilized for other projects of a similar nature. And then there's a few items that are on the to be determined list, so we will discuss those as well. Again, main funding sources will be the general obligation debt, which typically bonds would be 20-year general obligation debt. Notes would be 10 years. The law actually changed in 2024, so general obligation notes can now also be issued for 20 years. So that will be something that we will be updating our debt management policy on coming up soon to kind of reflect that change. And then again, we list the water utility debt, sewer and stormwater debt. General obligation debt, we're going to have more conversations about that based off of state statutes. So I was just, more information for those that are not familiar with the general obligation debt. So this is a section that you will see in our annual financial statements every single year. So it references Section 67.03, which says for general obligation debt, municipalities are only allowed to have 5% of your equalized value in debt. So this is the ratio that the city, prior city councils and city staff have been really focused on in previous years and trying to make sure we are well underneath that debt limit. It's called the legal margin for debt. So right here, you can see, this is from that spreadsheet that I know previous councils have looked at every single year on this meeting. It shows the equalized value in that middle column. And you can see, and as the years go, the equalized value has been increasing. So 2014, 2015, we actually had a negative equalized value change. Since then, it's been slowly increasing. And you'll see the huge increases in 2022 and 2023, which, I mean, based off of the market, you can predict that. But that has been helping show that our percentage of debt limit used has also been going down. This is why we have, we're trying to shift our focus a little bit more to that levy limit worksheet. Because we, one of the main goals from the Long Range Finance Committee was to bring that percentage of debt limit used down from like, we were at that 60, 70%, and bring it down below 40%. We got that, now we want to kind of maintain that 40%, if not, get it lower. But this is one of the big spreadsheets that we have been using. And we can play with these projections later. I was just trying to give a snapshot to kind of show how it all relates to each other. And feel free to interrupt me if you have questions while I'm going along. This is a graph that we can pull off of the Wisconsin Department of Revenue website. Basically, again, just showing how the City of Oshkosh's equalized value has changed over the years. So you'll see, starting in '17, how it's been steadily increasing, had a minor dip in 2023, but it's still, you can see the huge growth. This is that larger spreadsheet again. Again, we will dive into the spreadsheet later, especially if you guys want me to play with the projections. I, one of the items that we're going to be discussing is, what do we want to project going forward for debt? One of our struggles every single year with the CIP is there's tons of very worthy projects, but how do we, what's the reasonable amount for debt? This year, right now, we have about $21.5 million projected for GO debt. Does council feel okay with that? Do we need to try to lower that going forward? In these projections, I tried putting in $20 million as a projection going forward. Again, this is small, so we can dive into the spreadsheet more later if we want to.
Yeah, if I could, because there's a lot of history here. In the mid-teens, the council was very committed to lowering the debt ratio, but a lot of that, because we weren't getting an increase in equalized value, it was really done by borrowing less. So you see the column that says changed from previous year. You saw quite a bit of reduction over that time. Then, as equalized value started to strengthen, we got, you know, sort of a double benefit, because we weren't, we're still not borrowing as much as we were paying off, but that equalized value growth has helped us a great deal. Now, we're almost exclusively getting our ratio down due to the increase in equalized value. And that's because our original facility plan back in 2019, pre-COVID, pre-inflation, was, we were estimating about a $64 million facility improvement plan. That has gone up significantly, and we're redoing that study that we're going to be providing to council at a later time to kind of illustrate this. The, you know, we've got a couple of facilities in the budget, but it's all about keeping that debt ratio and a manageable number. And we're down, we're down at 40%, which is great. And as Julie said, she's plugged in some assumptions here. And we can certainly, I mean, one of the things we do is we'll go through an exercise, we'll put up the spreadsheet for you, and you can ask, what if we did this? What if we did that? And we can manipulate these numbers to go through scenarios that may happen, may not happen, but you can ask several what-if scenarios, so we can help you answer that question.
So in the debt management policy, one of the items that they've been trying to look at is that average or that percentage of debt limit that is being used. So that is that far right column that we're trying to track that. So you'll see right here, the graph on how we were, starting in 2017, we're almost at 60%, and now we're hovering right around 40%. So that also shows basically our debt margin. It would be the blue line, the top line. So that's the maximum debt the city could take out. And this is where we actually are for what debt we actually do have. So you can see the margin is still maintaining its spread. On the other note, an item that I wanted to start pointing out, and this I don't believe has been discussed as heavily with prior councils, is the levy limit worksheet. So this is what the municipality has to create every single year for the tax levy. So it's everything from the Department of Revenue through the state. High-level summary view is, you basically start with last year's tax levy. You can subtract off if you had a debt adjustment right here. So that would be the 11.7 that they're subtracting off, which comes up with your new adjusted actual levy. And line six shows that net new construction percentage, which will change every single year, and DOR provides that percentage. So you can see for 2023, the net new construction was about 1.416%. That calculates how much you are allowed to increase your tax levy. After that, you have to go into the adjustments. So on the adjustment side of the spreadsheet, there is an adjustment line E for debt service levy for general obligation debt after July 1st, 2005. That is basically how much of the tax levy is going to pay for debt principal and interest payments. Last year, you can see, we used $12.9 million. The year before that, we used $11.7 million. This line item is how you can increase your tax levy to pay for the debt that you need to pay for for capital projects. However, it automatically gets deducted the prior, the next year. So you only, even if you have $15 million of debt payments, you only put in the dollar amount that you know you need for the tax levy that the council has agreed to. So you can see down below, in 2016, our debt levy budget was about $10.4 million. That levy limit worksheet adjustment was only about $3.3 million. The rest was funded through debt, tax levy. We didn't have to increase the taxes to pay for that amount of the debt. So we only used about 31% of the levy limit adjustment that we could have. Through the years, that percentage keeps increasing. So we're using more and more of that adjustment. Now, last year, we were at 93.5%, which means we're running out of cushion, basically. So I know last year, council had pretty much said, make sure you keep that levy increase less than 4%. I think we came back with a 3.95% increase. Well, a couple of slides ago, I showed you, net new construction was only 1.4%. So the rest of that increase was from that debt adjustment line.
And we're getting closer to the point where we're only going to be able to tap into net new construction. We've been fortunate that we haven't had to do that. We've been able to do some very positive things, but we will be limited once we run out of this cushion. And one of the last things that I remember previous finance directors saying is, this is coming. And so Julie's made a concerted effort to analyze this, to see where we're at. So this is, even for returning council members, this is something that we haven't really had to talk about as of late. But it's, this is a new twist on how we're going to be able to, on how we're going to have to manage our debt as well as our levy.
So on the debt management policy, it also talks about trying to maintain the percentage of the tax levy that goes towards debt to be less than 33%. So on the spreadsheet, which we can play with later also, I'm just trying to show, and I know it's small numbers, so I apologize for that. But basically saying, right here's the portion levy, so total tax levy, and here is the debt portion of the levy. So I also broke it down into the tax rate. So if we go down to like 2023, you can see about $12.58 per 1,000 was the tax rate. Of that, $3.68 per 1,000 was going towards debt. So that was between 26 and 29% for those years. I put in projections, we can play with those projections, but the projections kept it basically within that same 27 to 30% range. So we are still below that 33% that is in our debt management policy. Any questions so far on the debt metrics? 2025 to 2034 CIP, we have a few highlights. Right now, on the proposed CIP, we have about $21.5 million in GO debt for projects. Again, when we, if you guys have questions, we can play with that spreadsheet. We can put in other projections. But right now, I put in a placeholder for $20 million in debt for 2026 to 2034. The current CIP, it's a 10-year CIP. We balanced as much as we could for 2025, 2026 to 2034, are still showing more than $20 million in that, those line items. With an assumed 3.5% equalized value growth, the percent of debt limit used will be 39.54 in 2034. So that's, again, one of those things that I figured we would want to discuss tonight with council is, what do we want to put in there for future debt issuances? I think previously, we had discussed $18 million due to inflation and some of those items that Mark was just discussing with facility improvement plan. We opted to $20 million for discussion purposes. Again, for discussion purposes, we are trying to figure out about how we would allocate that $20 million if we go forward, $20 million. Emphasis again was going to be on that facilities improvement plan. So we have $10 million for facilities, $1 million for parks, $1 million for sidewalks. And again, it's just something for discussion purposes. And then along with all these projects, there's also a lot of water, sewer and storm projects included. Those would be funded through the revenue bonds and not general obligation bonds or notes. So that is a little bit separate from some of those levy limit discussions that I was just talking about. So I wanted to provide, elders had worked with the city staff in March, April of 2024. So these are rough estimates, and we will be working with them to update these estimates during the 2025 budget process. And again, I apologize for the small writing, but it's basically showing that they are projecting that we start spending down some of the fund balance in water, sewer and storm to reduce the amount of debt, but there's a lot of projects going on in water, sewer and storm as well. So right now, even with spending down some of the cash on hand, 2025 is projecting a 37% increase. I do not believe that will actually come to fruition. I think we had some discussions with others, and that was based off of Clearwells and some of those other large projects that have been delayed a little bit. So I do think we're going to see increases in water, but I do believe that is a very rough estimate right now, so.
Yeah, you'll see this later on, that the Clearwells project is now projected to be about $37 million. So there's, I mean, quite a substantial amount. And that's, again, that's mandated by the DNR. And if the DNR and the Public Service Commission had resolved this years ago, this actually started back in 2007. That was a year before I got here. And we were supposed to be working on that Clearwells project when I first got here, but the Public Service Commission and the DNR kept arguing over the scope of what they would allow to get done. And so here we are, 16, 17 years later. And now we're, you know, through some times of, you know, pretty substantial increases due to construction inflation. But I think what Julie's talking about is, we're probably going to spread some of those costs out, just by the nature of the project. But the DNR and PSC fighting over this thing for years has cost us money.
And then I have the same projections for sewer. Again, they want us to spend down some of the cash on hand for sewer to reduce our borrowing. And then that's showing down here, more around the 7% for the next couple of years, 6.5%, and then starts going down tapering to 2% increases in 2031, and then 0% in 2032 and 2033. So again, these are rough estimates, but we will be working on getting these updated as well. Storm, very similar story. Like 2024, we did not borrow, or we will not be borrowing for stormwater. We will be funding all of the projects by, on cash for that year. And then we will continue to decrease our borrowing for the next few years based off of cash on hand. And storm is showing 2.5% increases in '25 and '26, and then 2% through '27 through 2031, and then starting in 2032, 0% increases. So that is the current projections. And like I said, we will continue to work on updating these.
Yeah, and the council, council may recall that the Chamber of Commerce was, you know, they're regularly watching our storm sewer rates. And so this is consistent with what we've talked about over the last couple of years, because there was a 6% and 6.5% increase, as you see, for 2022 and 2023. But now that we're drawing down some of our fund balance, we're able to limit that borrowing. And there are, there are a lot of big projects for storm sewer, except storm sewer projects associated with streets. But when Julie was talking about the sewer projects, that's the phosphorus treatment that we are mandated to do. That's, you know, just, you know, the, it's a substantial increase. I think it's a total of $30 million when all is said and done. But this, but the first round of this is going to be $12 million of that. So phosphorus is one of those mandates that they're putting on cities, even though we actually put less phosphorus back in the water than what we take in at the lake, because there's a lot of agricultural impacts that go down to Lake Winnebago. And so we're forced to clean Lake Winnebago, even though we didn't cause the pollution in that regard. So I'll get off my stump about that, but that's clearly an issue.
Mark, do you want to take this one?
That's right, it's my slide now. One of the things that we've done in the past is, you know, give council an idea of, you know, how we prioritize capital projects. And these are some of the factors. And then we're going to talk a little bit later about what the Long Range Finance Committee had weighed in on this as well. But these are some of the things that are, you know, that we look at. Imminent failure or in critical need of replacement. That's, you know, oftentimes, you'll see that with some of our vehicles or the, you know, critical need of replacement. The DNR essentially with the Clearwells. They believe it's in critical need of replacement. Contractual obligations, deadlines, anything, a lot of regulatory, long-term commitments, you know, things that we've put into our strategic plan or any of our capital plans for Sawdust District, things like that. Sometimes we're required to maintain grant eligibility to spend some funds on projects. So matching funds are not free. They just, they're requiring us to put up money in order for us to qualify. A lot of economic development projects are associated with that. A lot of the River Rock was done with some grants, but it wasn't free. We had to pony up our own money. Adherence to equipment replacement schedules, some of this, you know, we, you'll see, if you look at the 10-year CIP, we've got a lot of vehicles in there, and we have them in their long-term projection for planning purposes. But when we are looking at the vehicles and other pieces of equipment, we're taking a look at their condition now. Again, going back to the first factor, if there's imminent failure, critical need of replacement because of maintenance records, that tends to speed those things up. But that's not to say that we think this vehicle needs to get replaced, and then another vehicle is in worse shape, so we switch them around. So we follow the equipment replacement schedules more for the long-range planning. But when it comes time to actually replace the vehicles, it's the worst ones that are getting done. Of course, public and employee health, safety and security is important. Even though I don't totally agree with the DNR on the Clearwells, it is about health and safety, and that's something we need to do, as well as employee health, safety. You'll see that throughout the document. Long-term infrastructure needs, streets remain a big thing, and I think the public expects that. So, you know, when James and Steve and Justin from Public Works talk about the projects, you'll hear them talk about their 10-year capital improvement plan. So it's not that we don't want to get a project done. It's just that there's only so many we can do a year, and general obligation borrowing is limited, so we can do as much as we can afford. And then, of course, any items that are at or nearing the end of their useful life, kind of, it's sort of a, that's when I talk about the equipment replacement schedule. Then we're really looking at their end of their useful life. If they just aren't performing and we need to get them replaced, those will take precedent over pieces of equipment that may be older, but maybe in better shape. And we evaluate that constantly. And then, of course, other goals of the city strategic plan. I know that some council members got an email today from Mr. Wyman because of the downtown visioning study. Wanted to make sure something was in there, and there was. I just didn't, I didn't pinpoint it this morning when he asked, because I didn't have the CIP book in front of me. But those are the things. It's, you know, as Mr. Wyman, I think, stated, you know, he doesn't want to see an investment in a plan and then see it sit on the shelf. So meeting the goals of the strategic plan are an important part of what we consider when we, when we look at capital projects. So that's sort of the logic that we follow. And then there's also some other things that Julie can talk about.
So here's the CIP criteria. Again, we're trying to match, I'm not going to read through all of them, but we're trying to match useful life of the piece of equipment or vehicle, make sure we're not paying it off with debt for longer than we're going to have the vehicle, obvious things like that. And then type of debt, whether it's general obligation or revenue bond. So all different kinds of criteria that we are, criteria that we are looking at. We put together this slide for the major 2025 projects. It is, just this slide alone is 75% of the total for the entire CIP book. So utility infrastructure, it is a huge section. We kept the street portion of the GO debt to about $5 million this year. But that, they have prior year bond funding. They have water, sewer and storm bond funding. So that is still a huge portion of the CIP is utility infrastructure, which is street reconstruction.
And you may have noticed earlier with the funding sources, one of the new funding sources is the Special Assessment Replacement Fund. So what we used to special assess for streets is now part of this funding for these projects.
The large item for facilities this year would be the fire training center. We put the Grand Opera House renovations, the first portion of it, in 2025, but that will be a multi-year project, we are assuming. Water, we've already talked at length about the Clearwells. Water, we've already talked at length about the Clearwells ozone, but just in 2025, we have almost 40 million for that project. Washburn Avenue booster station pumps is another 2.4. And sewer, I know Mark mentioned it earlier, we have 12 million for the phosphorus limit. So right there is 75% of the CIP. We also have the CIP dashboard, so once we want to get in to the details or if you want any projects to be looked at individually, Public Works and GIS put that together so we can look at those. And then my next tax will just, we'll go through that right now before we start on questions, but Planning Commission is set to review the CIP on August 20th. We are hoping that our city council will adopt the CIP in August 27th. We can do a final review of CIP budget November 6th if necessary. But then the full CIP or the 2025 CIP will be included with adoption of the budget in, on November 12th, 2024. And then our next workshop is August 28th, and that will be on the operating budget for early projections. So that is what I had for the slideshow. Is there any questions on that before I switch to my spreadsheet? Still doesn't show at the greatest, but this is where I said if we want to play with any of the projections, this is the spreadsheet I was using. It shows from 2014 to 2023 with actuals. So you can see debt payments made, debt taken on, balance as of year-end, the change from the previous year, the equalized value, the debt limit, the percentage, that equalized value changed, and net debt and the debt levy. So these are the, what the debt management policy is asking us to keep in mind to make sure we're meeting those limits. For the projections, like we discussed, I put in 20 million of debt from 2026 on. With that, we still are in that 42% range of debt used, but that is using an equalized value increase of about 3.5%. Are there any other scenarios you want me to run with while we're on the screen or?
Well, maybe I can just make a few comments and that might trigger some questions from the council because, you know, we've used this sheet to kind of illustrate many things over the years. The, the growth in equalized value, you know, we just had the revaluation done and there were questions about when we do it. And typically, you know, up until 2008, you can almost count on a revale being done about every seven years. And that was usually, using that 3.5% number, within three to four years, you'd get out of the 10% range that you're supposed to be in, and then we would start the process to revalue. That's state law and traditionally, that's what the norm was. But this has hardly been anything normal. You take a look at the equalized value up until 2017 and we were having little to negative growth. So like I said earlier, we were borrowing less to get our percentage down. Then we, as the equalized value started to increase, you know, we, we took advantage of that to get our percentage down. Now, we could plug in, for example, Julie, just for, for, you know, just for fun, just to illustrate this, why don't you make that 4.5% on the equalized value increase and just take a look at what happens? Just that 1%, the, you know, it goes down, we're, we're already down to 30%. Now, again, that is one scenario. So if you put that back, or make it 2.5, Julie, just to demonstrate, because you go to 2.5 and then we're crawling back up above 40%, hitting the mid-40s. So you can see that that will impact how, how we do that. And so, and that's just one example. You can also change the amount you borrow because let's say it's 2.5% growth and we have to cut back. So let's say we cut the 20 million to 18 million, just to, just to give you an idea about that. So you can see that the percentage goes down just, it'll make an impact. So things will reverse themselves depending on which scenarios you put in. But of course, you know, we've got some very significant facility needs. So I'm going to say, you know, take it up to 22 million because Julie and, Julie's and my goal for the budget was to get the, get the borrowing in the low 20s. But you can see what happens with that scenario with a 2.5% growth rate and 22 million, we're back up to 50% by 2044. So you can see that this, this will impact. So now we have to update this every single year because you have to, you have to reconcile it to actuals. But this illustrates, you know, how council can take a look at that debt limit goal that they have. And they can, they can manipulate it on an annual basis depending on the prior year's growth and, and your needs. And you may have to say, we may need to cut some borrowing and cut some capital projects as a result. But I can tell you that with the, with the facilities, you know, back in 2019, we put an estimate in of about 64 million. I wouldn't be surprised if that number, when the final report comes out, I wouldn't be surprised if it's upwards of 100 million now. Think of the different projects that we had. The Clearwells was, you know, around a $30 million project and now it's 39 million. So that just gives you an idea of construction inflation. Now, I'm hearing good things that, that contractors aren't super busy, but they're still busy, but it's starting to ease up a little bit. And that may help us. But we have to consider every single scenario because I can't tell you, I don't have a crystal ball, I can't tell you exactly what's going to happen, but I can tell you that if A happens, then B will occur. I can, I can show you that, but it's all, it's all projection. So if I blabbed on enough, perhaps, you know, you may have some questions or maybe I, maybe I illustrated it with how Julie was able to manipulate the spreadsheet.
Well, if I may, I'm going to share the same thing that jumped out at me last year, sorry, is column U, that even though we're hitting our debt percentage, if we put it back to 3.5% assumption, that our dollar amount of total dollars debt is going to continue to go up. And that's where I'm going to, you know, just ask the question again, like, yes, we're, it's a percentage of equalized value, but is that going to be a healthy trend for us to continue of having our dollar amount continue to increase like that?
And I'd like to echo that because that's my concern as well, because if our debt continues to climb and then we have a year where there isn't so much of an equalized property value raise, then we could get caught in a significant issue where we have to borrow less and then that number keeps climbing and that could be some sort of bigger issue down the line. So that number does, that column does concern me as well. I know that we are growing at the same time in terms of our property value, but, you know, if there's an off year or two or another bad trend, that could, could end poorly.
And that's why I think council does have the ability, when they see those numbers take a turn, they can respond accordingly. The other one that I, I really like what Julie's, you know, added to this, because our focus has been almost exclusively on that percentage of debt limit used. But you can see that our debt levy, we're still, you know, tracking below 30%. And our policy says we're not to exceed 33%. So we've been able to keep that going. So hopefully, that's, that's another measure that the Long Range Finance Committee has identified as something we need to keep a look at. So we're going to continue to do that.
I guess another concern I have is column T on this sheet, the levy limit, and approaching that point. And Julie, my question for you is, in terms of what you see around the area, what happens to other municipalities when they get to this kind of crunch time, there's not as much of a breathing room per se as, as we would have had, say, you know, a decade ago when it was around 31% or eight years ago?
That's really where the levy limit crunch comes in because you can't use that debt adjustment to help with operations. Your truly, operations are subject to that net new construction. So that's where operations budgeting gets even tighter than it currently is. And then to piggyback off of Councilmember Beal's question, I did, I mean, there's projections all over this spreadsheet, so part of the future debt projections, I went off of an average of how we've been currently paying off debt. Part of it is we could potentially pay off debt faster, but that would increase how much we need to put in the debt levy. So that would increase the tax levy if we're paying it off faster. That will help keep the balance lower, but it might cause the tax rate to increase. So there's ways to keep the debt amount lower, but it might come at, if you're taking out more debt, you either have to pay it off faster or you just have to have a higher balance, if that makes sense. There's, that's, those are kind of your two options. The levy limit adjustment gives you that ability to pay it off faster, it's just that causes the tax rate to increase.
This has been a good worksheet over the last couple of years. I know Council Finance Director Van Gompo had kind of instituted this one in terms of being able to track back to your, I think, your projection tab. One, just to be able to track it, but this one's not showing, you got some of the cells hidden or some of the rows hidden, where we were at, right? It's, it's a good historical purview of what previous councils have been able to accomplish and, you know, where we were at. 73, 75% back in 2013, and that was, that was deliberate. Those were actions that were taken because citizens demanded action in, within certain areas and city staff and city council, you know, responded. But then it was also like, okay, pump the brakes, let's get this back under control. Some previous councils have been, made some good progress in that. The, the percentage of debt limit used, and you jump in when I, when I say something wrong here, the, the reason for having a good goal there is when we go to Moody's, when we go to take debt on, we want good, we want as good rating as possible. That's one of those factors. So it's, it's, so while we know that the debt, total debt is increasing, having a strong number there is good in terms of our ability to get the best rates possible. And then Long Range Finance had developed a few other metrics, the net direct debt, the debt levy, those percentages and those ratios to make sure that, those are all things that the investors are looking at too, to make sure we're staying in, that the numbers are real, that the numbers are important, that we're watching those. But you're right, you know, we've got some projects and we got to do, if we're doing them, we're going to take on debt to do them, to your point, you know, we're going to pay for them somehow, you know, are we going to increase the levy to pay for them, are we going to pay them off longer, shorter, and then the impacts on operations at some point is, is coming home, so.
Well, another question I have is that in the lowering of our percentage of debt limit used, has that coincided with an upgrade in our credit rating or not necessarily?
Not much. The, we were in pretty rough shape. I mean, when we were at 70%, in fact, that spreadsheet, if, if it had even more years, when I first got here, there was one year we were at 84%. So that actually got us a downgrade. So we've been working on that since then. There's other factors and growth in equalized value is part of that. And so since we've seen some recent growth, that's pretty unprecedented for, for Oshkosh, I think we can make a pretty compelling case for that. The other factor that Moody's looks at is income per capita, and we don't measure up well with that because, you know, the statistics you hear from the school district about, you know, 42% of our students are on free and reduced lunch. So income per capita is, is a factor that actually works against us. So while we've done a really good job on the debt percentage, our, that's offset by income per capita.
If I could just piggyback a little bit on what Mark said and to answer your question, Councilmember Foam, you know, going back in history, when, when the levy limits were established, you know, Oshkosh had a reputation for having the lowest tax rate around. And that was great for us to be able to stand up and say, hey, we have the lowest tax rate compared to all other municipalities, but there was a lot of deferred maintenance. So there weren't a lot of facilities issues taken care of, and that deferred maintenance really caught up with us. So although it was politically appealing to say that, practically, we had to incur a lot of costs because that maintenance was deferred, which resulted in that low tax rate. So I guess the other thing I'd like to point out to piggyback off of what Mark said is, you know, we're, we're kind of facing that same sort of thing again. We don't have the levy limits being initially placed on us, but if we defer that maintenance, then we're going to have that same sort of, kind of rebound effect, you know, where we're going to have to at some point in an emergency situation, pay for facilities, and then we're going to be subject to that. So the whole approach, I think, that you're going to hear about tonight from, from the departments is to try to look at that and plan ahead and plan to do it in a measured way that council feels comfortable with, you know, what you think can be tolerated, and not wait until it's an emergency and something breaks and then we, we have kind of a de facto citizen approval because we have no other choice, you know? I don't think that's a great way to manage anything. We wouldn't, citizens wouldn't do it that way and I don't think they'd, they'd want us to do it that way. So I just point that out as kind of a little recap of history.
Sure. And deferring maintenance is a forced decision anyway. I don't think anybody here would like to advocate for that because that'll just cost us more in the future and make us look stupid.
Right, exactly.
I, I think that's a really good point to bring up, that I think we often get caught in this. Fiscal responsibility means no debt, it means paying for things in cash, and that's not the case. Fiscal responsibility is being smart with the money you have. It doesn't mean carrying debt, it does mean carrying a smart amount of debt though. I, I'm far more interested in that number that says what our equalized value to debt ratio is than what our raw debt is. I mean, if you compare, like a city of Chicago, that's a giant city, right? If we compared our, our debt compared to theirs, you're not comparing apples to apples right there here. You really have to have that ratio set up to understand. I kind of look at this as like households, right? I mean, a household that makes more money carries more debt, a household that has less money carries less debt. You just have to make sure that, that percentage is, is good. And I think we've been getting there. I really do want to commend last, past councils for really getting us, I think, out of a very tight situation and, and staff as well. I mean, I think we've had some, some rough years in the past and we're looking very financially good right now.
Well, I think we could manipulate the spreadsheet all night, but I think you get a good idea of how the different elements impact everything. So, you know, if, if there are any questions, you know, we can, we can move on. Julie, what, what did you, what next want to show spreadsheet-wise, or are we at the point where you can talk about projects?
We are at the point that if they want to talk about projects, I can pull up the GIS map that Public Works put together if there's any questions on street projects. Otherwise, I do not have anything else to show, just here to.
Julie, why don't you go to that slide again that had the major projects? Because it was interesting as we were looking at it, you know, we were like, oh, let's put this project, that project in there. And then when we saw it, it's like, well, my gosh, this is, this is three quarters of the entire CIP on that slide. So it kind of gives you a good feel and, you know, obviously, utility infrastructure is a huge part of that. Excuse me. And then we're trying to, you know, this is one of those years where we're borrowing more for facilities than the, originally, when we came up with the $64 million, we were like, well, we'll average $6.4 million in borrowing a year. Well, the Fire Training Center is going to cost a little more than 6.4 million, so we're, this is a year we go above that average. The Grand Annex renovation, we're, we're looking at some things that you're going to hear more about, but we're probably looking at stretching that project out a little more, given some things that we've, we've found. And, and the Grand will need more time to do fundraising as well. But those, those two facilities are a big part of this. And then, of course, And then, of course, the mandates for the Clearwells and the phosphorus is substantial.
I just had one quick question. It was speaking of, you know, when things get too far gone, how are we on the water intakes now that we had to deal with last fall? Is that all? Sorry to make you come up right away, but is that something that we're gonna have to continue to deal with or does that put the bad?
In the short term, that immediate issue has been resolved. We do have some longer-term planning that we are working on to try to reestablish reliable backup intake. You know, right now, the twenty-four inch backups that we have previously utilized are not very functional. Ice shows over the last few years have done some damage to them. So we do have to continue to work on establishing a reliable backup system. But as far as the cleaning goes, the cleaning project was extremely successful. It gives us, gave us a good opportunity to get a remote operated vehicle camera, like a little submarine boat thing that can, you know, drive through the, the intake pipe to do an inspection. It gave us a good opportunity to get that done. And then it also gives us a good reset point so we can be a lot more proactive in our inspections and maybe some more minor maintenance cleanings rather than getting to a point that we ended up in last winter.
Do we have any sense as to how frequently, I mean, I know the disease for muscles, but I mean, do you know how frequently we're looking to try to clean?
It is something that we are going to be doing a lot more often from an inspection standpoint. Obviously, it was about twenty years from brand-new to where we had gotten to this past winter. So by being a lot more proactive in our inspection cycle and, you know, being able to do some more maintenance cleanings will, will keep us out of that type of a situation.
Sure.
Does council have questions regarding, as long as James is sitting there, and he's got, and we all recognize his budget's one of the biggest parts, but is there anything specific in terms of utilities or street reconstructions, as long as he's there?
Mr. Mayor, you read my mind. I think James, I think it's important to talk about what's been Stringham Creek and working our way back to Ninth and Ohio because of, you know, we're always one bad storm away from Ninth and Ohio getting flooded. And the, this year, 2025, is gonna represent some significant projects to complete the stretch from basically South Park northeast to the Fox River. James, if you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, as, as council's aware, we've got a project going on right now in 2024, reconstruction of Fifth Avenue, Seventh Avenue, Michigan Street and Iowa Street. That's really extending that large box culvert, which was the enclosure of the previous Stringham Creek. We had done the Outfall project at the Fox River a couple of years ago. We started with that project this year. Will get us all the way back to the intersection of Seventh and Michigan. As you look at the, you know, kind of those major project lists there, you see Michigan Street and West Eleventh Avenue. Michigan Street, that'll take us from the intersection of Seventh and Michigan, south to Eleventh, and then on Eleventh, west to a few hundred feet from Ohio Street. And at that point, the large box culvert zigzags through an alleyway. But based on our stormwater modeling, it was really critical that we get to that point of West Eleventh Avenue and the alleyway. So as you can see here in the 2025 proposed CIP, you know, we're, we're getting that critical stretch of infrastructure done. This gives us the main backbone storm sewer system that we can now start looking at, you know, kind of the smaller arteries, if you will, going down each of the streets to, to pick up, you know, some critical points. You know, Ninth Avenue has had some issues, you know, now we can start looking at, I know Ninth Avenue in this area is in some of the further out years of the plan, so again, we'd be looking at extending larger storm sewer to pick up those areas. But it's, it's critical to get this backbone infrastructure done first. And, you know, with 2024 and 2025, we're, we're really accomplishing a huge chunk of that backbone infrastructure that needed to get done.
And that'll have, I mean, that has a direct impact, right? People see that, people can feel it, you know, we get rain and those, the folks in that area, they get anxious real quick about, you know, what's it gonna mean for them. So in terms of visible impact, it's, it's a big one.
Right.
Yeah, in north and east of South Park, there are no stormwater management facilities, meaning ponds, things like that. That's old. Stringham Creek was converted into storm sewers. And this is huge for addressing Stringham Creek, which, again, we talk about, we've got a hundred twenty different water sheds. Stringham Creek's one of them. It's one of the larger ones, but the, that entire immediate south side has always been at risk. So this is a huge project for that neighborhood and that watershed.
Yeah, you mentioned the watersheds, Mark. This particular watershed stretches back to I-41 and slightly west of I-41. You know, so you think of where the issue is, you know, from, you know, South Park to the Fox River, but that water is originating upstream all the way to the west side of the interstate. And there's no management facilities in between there really to, to slow it down. You look at Campbell Creek. Mark mentioned, you know, the enclosure of the creek into a pipe, a storm sewer system. Campbell Creek is the exact same thing from Whitsell Avenue, right there by Lourdes, all the way until you get south of Ninth Avenue. That's enclosed, completely enclosed. That was done in the forties, fifties, and sixties. But right before it goes into that pipe, we've got the large armory area detention basin. We've got the Ninth and Washburn that also services that area. So we're able to slow that water down before it gets into that enclosed system. On Stringham, there, there really isn't a lot of good opportunities to slow it down, so we're trying to open up the pipe to, to get it to flow through quicker.
So this kind of goes back to that slide at the beginning where you focus on the plan, not the projects, because the projects really make up the plan. And James and his staff, before James was Public Works Director, he was our, you know, our stormwater engineer. And, I mean, we developed plans for our different water sheds, and we actually have a thirty-five year plan that's now less than twenty years, if my math is correct, James, but it's still demonstrating that we've got a lot of projects to do and we need to keep moving on those. And when we get a project done and we get great compliments, that only helps for that immediate neighborhood. And Ken Arneson with Evergreen has talked about the things we did on Sawyer Creek that have helped in the immediate area around Evergreen. And Ken, on behalf of Evergreen, is very appreciative of it. But that doesn't do a thing for the north side. So we've got to do all the north side watersheds. And, and this Stringham Creek was probably one of the bigger ones. And, you know, if, if you look at the CIP exclusively for stormwater, you're gonna see in the utility infrastructure, you're gonna see a lot of other streets getting done to address that. And then you're gonna see ponds that will still be developed over, over the next, at least the next decade that you can see on the CIP. But James and his staff have still probably, excuse me, twenty years worth of work left to do, to make a dent in the original thirty-five year plan.
And that doesn't take into account new regulations that have been put on. We talk about phosphorus from a wastewater standpoint. It's also an issue from a stormwater standpoint. You know, so that's something we're continuing to work on and monitor. We just updated our citywide water quality modeling program to take a look at compliance with the TMDL, the Total Maximum Daily Load document for phosphorus. The way the statutes and regulations are currently structured at, at the state level, we've got probably thirty to fifty years to come into compliance from a stormwater standpoint. Whereas from the wastewater standpoint, we had about five.
Slightly different topic, but Clearwells has been on the city's, the council's agenda or council's budget for the last several years. How close are we to being able to say that it will get started in terms of final finals?
We're working through the final design in the fence. We are working on selecting a landscape architect to help with the visualization of the outside of the fence aspects, but we are working on getting the final design work done inside the fence as well, because that's very critical, given the extreme time that we're gonna be looking at for materials and equipment supplies. You know, some of that equipment that we're looking at as far as, you know, pumps and controllers, you know, those aren't things you can just, you know, you know, go to, you know, abc.com and order them and get them, you know, in, in your mailbox next week. Some of those things are eighteen to thirty-six month lead time items. So that's why we're, we're focusing very hard on getting that design work done so we can get those time clocks started while we finish working on the visualization outside the fence.
And regarding those long lead items, those are the core of any, you know, large engineering project, public engineering project. When do you anticipate that those will be ordered so that the process can get started? Or is that just, you know, while you're doing the visual aids, those will get ordered in the background once you have approvals for those?
Yeah, what I'm envisioning is we'll get the final design inside the fence done so we can get that bid, get a contractor moving on getting shop drawings and getting things ordered while we're continuing to work on the visualization outside the fence. So our, our goal right now is to, to get some of those clocks started while we're finishing some of that other visualization outside the fence.
Got it.
James, how much more approval do you need from the DNR on some of this stuff? Because sometimes that slows things down too.
A lot. You know, a, a project such as this will still have to go through DNR engineering review. It will have to go through Public Service Commission review. So, and quite frankly, those could take many months. You know, DNR has been much more willing to meet with us throughout design processes to understand where projects are at and how they've gotten to certain points, whereas the Public Service Commission has been much more of, get your plans done and then submit them and we'll look at them. So, you know, between the two agencies, you know, if we submit them at the same time, you know, at least then, you know, the review times can run concurrently, but I would envision a minimum of three months of review time at the agencies, if not more. And some comments from one agency might impact a submittal to the other agency. So that's where some of the challenge comes into in satisfying the multiple regulatory agencies that we're dealing with on those projects.
And I wanted to be responsive to Councilmember Fohm's question because it's not just about ordering the equipment. We have to get the equipment approved before we can order, and then the clock starts on the, on the lead time for these things. So I, I just wanted to, you know, it's like, why, you know, we're gonna order it tomorrow? No, we're not gonna order it until the DNR or Public Service Commission says, yep, now you've got approval for this way to do it. So there's, there's oftentimes delays that are put up through the regulatory agencies.
And one thing that we've done, I, I don't remember exactly when we took the equipment procurement for the liquid oxygen and ozone generators, but we actually did a procurement for the equipment to start the shop drawing review and start the, start the clock because those were such a long timeframe. But that also allows us to design the building improvements specific to the piece of equipment that was procured. So we're gonna have a second bid award, if you will, to the actual contractor that'll be installing the equipment that the council's already approved the purchase of. So, you know, some of those long lead times things, we may look at doing a, a similar type of a process to a competitive procurement for those long lead time equipments while we finish up some of the other things.
Right. I'm sure the last thing we want to do is order a bunch of stuff and then have DNR and PSC say that it's not compliant.
Yeah, they, and actually, I mean, they, yeah, they would give us a hard time about going out to, to bid without their approvals.
Thank you. Have they said anything about, I know there was some question on the sheet of the building, have they gotten back to us on that?
They, they won't. Public Service Commission, until that goes before them, they won't, they won't comment. That's, you know, we've tried to engage the, the agencies. As I said before, the DNR's been more willing to meet with us throughout the process. The Public Service Commission's been, we'll get your plans done and then, then submit them and then we'll review them and give you comments. So that is a comment we have not gotten because we haven't gotten to the point to give it to them yet.
So much of the Clearwaters is being funded through the Safe Water Drinking Loan Program?
The Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, that is correct.
Can you tell me a little bit more about that? Because I know we talked about it last year and I was...
The Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, similar to the Clean Water Fund Loan Program on the wastewater side, they are a reimbursement mechanism of funding. We may need to do some, I'm not sure what the exact term is, Julie, but some kind of stopgap borrowing to say, you know, because we might not have enough, you know, you gotta spend the money to submit it to get reimbursed. So, you know, over the course of the, you know, if it takes thirty-six months of construction, so you start paying the, the contractors or the equipment suppliers, and then you submit to the agency for reimbursement. And then, once the project is done and closed out, then you start making repayments. But there may be a need to do some short-term borrowing to, for lack of a better word, have the cash to be able to pay the contractor upfront. So that's, that's a little different than revenue borrowing where we say, okay, this is gonna be a ten million dollar project and we borrow the ten million dollars and, and then, you know, we hold it and pay the contractors. We go, in the case of those two loan programs, you know, we pay the contractor, then we submit to get reimbursed, and then they reimburse us and, you know, they kind of keep a running tally of it. Interest accrues during the construction timeframe, but you don't start making payments until the project is closed out.
What kind of rate are those?
I, I don't, off the top of my head, know what the, the current rate is. It's generally a little bit more favorable than, than revenue bond borrowing.
Okay.
I know when rates were extremely low, they were very close, if not, you know, you know, identical, but now that rates have climbed back up again, I haven't looked to see what the benchmarks are, but generally speaking, it's a little bit more favorable than doing revenue borrowing.
Anything more for Public Works for James?
You're gonna accidentally get off early.
And one thing I just, I'll, I'll add to the conversation, if I may, Mayor. You know, the Furnow Avenue project is listed as funding to be determined. You know, Finance Director Colmas had mentioned, you know, some of the other projects we have identified already in the plan is using previously borrowed money from projects that have come in under budget. You know, Council, you see this a lot of times with our CIP amendments, you know, a project comes over, we're like, well, we're gonna take the money from this other project that has come in under. We have identified funding through those various mechanisms to be able to use that if, if council decides they want to give us a direction to move forward with that one. We do have some identified in addition to what we've already identified to lower the borrowing for 2025.
Good to know.
Maybe a question regarding that Furnow. I, I don't remember the last time we talked about that project, you know, whether we needed to do that in a short order or put that off a little bit longer. I know it's been put off in the past, but I mean, what's the, I'm trying to search for the words here. How badly do we need to get that done?
This project is one that's been in the plan for twenty years. This project was originally conceived during the Northwest Industrial Park expansion, you know, west of Vinland along Furnow Avenue. This project is a very, from an economic development standpoint, a very critical connection from the North Industrial Park to the Northwest Industrial Park and then to US-45 and I-41. So from a, an industry and freight traffic movement, it is a very important link. There are very few east-west streets, and in fact, you know, countywide does not have an interchange with 41 or 45. Snell Road does not have an interchange. It's Furnow that intersects with 41 and, that intersects with Algoma and 45 and has an interchange to be able to use either 45 or 41. So from an east-west traffic standpoint of getting industrial traffic in and out of both the Northwest and the North Industrial Park, it is a very important piece of infrastructure.
And we have some active interest in properties in the Northwest Industrial Park that I think will kind of trigger the increased need for that. I think when we were talking about this last year, we kept talking about Valley Christian and Valley Christian looking at doing something, but, and that still exists, but it's really more about these, these businesses that are, you know, gonna add some substantial tax base to the city that are, are kind of triggering that. But again, because the funding's to be determined, you know, we may just need to wait until we, we know if we're gonna get some, some development over there. But... But I think GOEBC and our economic development staff have been working on this for a couple of years now. So there might be, there might be in the near future, something to, to talk about.
Is that area a TIF at all, do you know?
The Northwest Industrial Park has a TIF, but the, from what I understand from our previous Finance Director, the, the time period that you could expend money out of that TIF has expired. Did I get that right, Julie? Okay.
Yeah.
Can't make any agreements.
And Mr., I'm not sure if Mr. Lyons is there or not, but, but, you know, we were just having a discussion about some of the TIFs yesterday with the Joint Review Board, and yeah, that's, that's one of the challenges with, with that TIF. It's, it's kind of dated, so adding the value, the good news is that it'll get back on our tax roll a lot quicker because eventually that TIF's going to be closing in relatively short order.
All right. If there's nothing else?
Thank you for letting me get that.
Of course, no, I was going to, I wanted to have you do that anyway, so thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Well, I'll still be here if you think of something else.
Sounds good. If you guys don't mind, I'd like to invite up Mr. Urban. I didn't give him a heads up, but he'll be able to handle this one. Handle the facilities. City Manager Roloff alluded to something before, and we've talked about it briefly. There's this rough 10-year plan to improve our facilities. 1920-ish, we started making some, some headway on that, did some work on the Parks Building, right? That was our first big one, was able to chop one off. And then Council tried to make a, attempted, and I think we have made a concerted effort to say, to Mark's point, you know, six, roughly six million a year for 10 years and we're, we're going to get there. One of the things that you guys do is you handle trying to prioritize these projects, right? I mean, one of the things I like is, like within our HVAC and roofing, you know, we're not here saying, well, you should replace the roof on City Hall, but you shouldn't do it on PD, like or on another building, right? That's your job, that's your folks. I like how, like, if, if we'll talk about the project list we have and how you guys are trying to go about that, you know, in a systematic way. Would you mind?
Sure. In '21, we did our first facilities condition assessment report. That was system-wide. We incorporated all the buildings that we had. I don't think it had been done ever before that, but the intent of that project was due, as you said, to try to prioritize the various facilities and where they are at now, what are the major systems that need to be replaced, you know, where, where they'll be in the plan. So that was the first starting point where we could kind of get an, you know, kind of get our hands around a little bit to kind of get an idea of where we're at. City Manager Roloff had some great strategy with that in terms of prioritizing some of those projects as well, similar to what some of the priorities were that were laid out here before. So that was our first starting point with that. In the last year, we've, you know, we've seen a lot of changes with, with facilities. We've seen a lot of things come up. We've certainly seen prices go up, which has led us to the idea now that we need to update that plan again. It's only been a few years, but things have really changed. So we're working with Cooney and Associates. They're, it may, that may be a familiar name, we've used them for other projects. They're going to do the updated plan to that, and they're going to basically do all the buildings all over again, go through similar ideas of what they're looking at, everything from the roofs to HVAC to all the parts of those buildings and where they're at. And then similarly, come up with a priority ranking of where they should be. So we hope to have that ready by next May, in time for this process again. And then that'll kind of help bring these all back into focus on where they're at and then kind of give the Council a long-term look of, hey, where are these prices? Where are the priorities? Where, where should we be spending our money with facilities? And like Assistant City Manager Fitzpatrick said, I think there has been a tremendous amount of deferred maintenance. We, we have a lot of old, old buildings. Look at the one we're in now. So it's, this has been going on for years here, and I think it's time we unfortunately have to, maybe have to bite the bullet a little bit and think about looking proactively towards some newer buildings. When we put them in, they've been fabulous. I mean, look at any of the new buildings we've put in and the tremendous efficiencies, operations, et cetera, that have been gained by doing that. So we're excited about it, but it's going to take a little time, but I think by, by a year from now, we should have a, should have that plan ready to share with the Council.
I think for us to be able to try the earmark is tough. You know, we talked, we talked about that spreadsheet that was up there, right? We can only talk about this year, really, about our decision-making within, you know, fiscal '25, and we're trying to project forward, but, you know, a year from now, if things have gone sideways, you know, we'll make a different decision, but trying to plan for the future and saying, you know, we're going to earmark X amount of dollars for you guys to improve facilities, you know, it's on you guys then to pick which ones and the prioritization of those and where those dollars are best spent and how, you know, for example, you know, 7.7 for, for fire training, right? A million for Grand Opera. And then from there out, 30 million for City Hall Fire Station and Police and Fire, right? So I'm just, I think it's important that we leave that part to you guys in terms of what is the best use of those dollars that we're willing to earmark for facility improvements. So just sharing that. You guys have any questions on?
Yes, Mr. Ryan, glad you brought that up, and Mr. Urban, I'm glad you're here, too. That was one of mine, having never done this process before, that's part of why I wanted you to clarify that. So some of my biggest questions in the year are for 2025, therefore the future ones, and you brought up my biggest one, the $30 million for City Hall, because I have a plan in front of me, I've read it, I know what it is, so you're going to redo it, obviously, right?
Right.
But as far as this process goes at this table right now, how much consideration do you want this Council paying on that discussion?
26 and beyond, not too much. And quite honestly, 25 is what's in front of us, but yet giving guidance, because we don't want staff exerting effort to something that we won't potentially, you know, back.
Yep. Okay, so those are more, for my reference, that's future planning things to be concerned about when we get there. I'm glad to hear this plan is being redone, because when I saw $30 million versus the maximum of 12 in 2019, that's a lot, because you could build this building for less than that now. So that's the hard part for me to get my head around. So it's an important thing to talk about as we look to the future, of course, but I want to know how much focus you walk from us on this now, in 25.
Yeah, generally, staff and finance needs 25, but as they've kind of talked, it's a 10-year plan for a reason, so that way things are always in the works and if we have the ability to get things funded through other, other ways, it's important that we have it in the works and in the plan.
Got it. But don't let 10 million in 2026 concern me for 2025, is what you're saying.
I think Councilmember Larson makes a good point there. I think that was part of the reason that, there was a slide that Julie had put up about what are, when we were talking about 20 million in the future, and she said about 10 million a year for facilities. But if you take a look at page two of that section that Julie did have up on the board, you take a look at it's facilities total for 2025, which I think you're right, Chris, that the focus needs to be on 2025, but we can't ignore 2026 because at 17.7 million, of which 14 is assumed, 14 million's assumed to be geo-borrowing, and Julie's framework only shows 10. So we got to reconcile all that. So part of, John, what's, putting you on the spot a little bit, what's your projection on Cooney completing that? Because that'll be straight to a Council workshop.
Well, our hope was to have it done by May of next year so that we'd be ready in time for the 26th CIP process.
Okay, so that gives you an idea. Chris, I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
You know, just to add a little more to your question, too, Councilmember Larson, I think, you know, it's not only important for Council to take a look at it beyond 2025, but also I think, in addition to Council being willing to look at facilities no longer with a longer lens, it was really, to provide a little more history, recent history, it was really gratifying to see the departments, you know, kind of allow us to prioritize projects in this way, too, the way that the Mayor just talked about. Prior to that, departments were responsible for all their individual facilities, and it was very difficult because they had their regular jobs to do. And to take on a project with this kind of scope and magnitude, it was, it was very challenging for departments. So I think when we look at these projects and they're expanded out to 10 years, understanding that these projects are going to be prioritized by the greatest need, but when they, when they look at when they have the opportunity to have their building done, it gives them a little hope that it is going to get completed, and they understand that, hey, I'm in line, but, you know, this other department has a greater need now and I can accept that. So I think that's something that is an important part of this process that really is, is unspoken.
Go ahead, thank you. Any questions on facilities? Or anything under John Urban's per view? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there any other department heads, any of you would like to invite up just to talk about their spaces?
I did have a brief question on the amount of Great Neighborhoods funding. It's just lower than the next one.
And just for Councils, I know Julie laid out the timeline, what this was, what we have though is over the next month-ish, you know, for lots of questions. And even as we get into November, you know, plenty of time for lots of questions. This isn't a, something that, you know, you're blessing tonight and then we walk away from it. So if you've got specific project questions, absolutely, direct them to Finance and then, you know, the appropriate department head for them to, to review. I hope I gave you enough time to come on up and...
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, you got it.
Specific question about it?
Yeah, so I just, I looked, it was, it was 50K for 2025 and then it's 150K for the next few years. I know we talked briefly in our housing discussions on how that fund is maybe a little bit drying up. Is that a different case now? Is that...
So Great Neighborhoods Fund is different than Healthy Neighborhoods Fund.
Okay.
Great Neighborhoods is a CIP-funded program annually for a Great Neighborhoods program where the recognized neighborhoods apply to the city for projects within the public realm, parks, trails, wilds, or gazebo, for example. So that's, it's fully CIP-funded. It's not the same as the Healthy Neighborhoods Fund.
Sure. And then I guess, just, what's the difference between the 50K and the 150K for the rest?
So originally, we had submitted at 150,000 for this year. I think a City Manager and Finance Director were going through, based on a lot of the needs of the community, is their recommendation is taking it down to 50K because there's a lot of CIP requests and a lot of needs. We do have some balance in that account from prior years where it was not all completely allocated. So hopefully, you know, with a lower amount, of course, we'd love to see more, but I think we'll be able to kind of bridge the gap with some things that have come in underfunded or not fully allocated in prior years, and then see where we're at again next year.
True. Okay.
Yeah, it was primarily because there were some monies left there. Julie may have the amount, I don't have, I don't know the exact amount, but we knew that we had some, some unspent funds that carry over, so if a neighborhood association has a really great idea and it's more than 50,000, you know, that doesn't mean they can't get it.
And we're still going through, technically, last year's funded right now with the neighborhoods. That program is wrapping up here this summer, so within the next probably about 60 to 90 days, we'll actually be coming to Council to show you the projects that were funded from last year's CIP.
Thank you.
Got a question for Chief Stanley.
Anything else for Mr. Lyons or anything with economic development, as long as he's here? Thank you very much. Fire Chief Stanley, it sounds like we've got a question for you as well.
Evening, audience.
So a quick question for you, Chief. With the Fire Training Center, do you foresee other fire agencies around the county, around the Fox Valley, coming here and training with us or using the space to, if they may not have a fire training center themselves, utilizing that space, you know, potentially leasing it or renting from us for a day or so, once this is completed?
Yeah, I think that potential certainly exists. You know, that there is kind of a void in training centers right where we're at here in the middle. Appleton, at the Fox Valley Technical College has a great training facility. Fond du Lac, in the last few years, built a training facility, but, you know, here in between those two, there really isn't much, much opportunity. So I do see that as being a potential draw for neighboring departments, you know, so that, we've already had some discussions with, you know, some of our surrounding volunteer townships about would we be able to, to do some training there as well? You know, additionally, as we do more joint training, you know, that we've already these past few years done a regional fire academy, you know, we look at what other regional opportunities are there to work with, you know, departments from Green Bay to Fond du Lac. So you might have a fire recruit academy going on in Fond du Lac, and we might have the driving academy going on here, and Nina Minasha may have company officer academy going on at the same time. So it just gives us more interoperability as well. So it, I do, in response to your question, see it as a really versatile piece for, for this region.
Excellent. Very good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good questions, Silver. Anybody have anything else that we need to have answered? Mark, anything else from, from you in the virtual room?
Yes, I had, I just had to unmute. Thank you. Well, you know, with, with Chief Stanley being up there, I think facilities are a key portion because virtually all of the fire department stations are in need of a redo. And with the training center, you know, we're trying to manage all the facilities, like, like Mr. Fitzpatrick mentioned, you know, it's, there's turns for everybody, but you'll see that there's multiple fire stations. Fire Station 15 needs some improvement, and then you've got 17, 18, and 19, which are virtually, those three are virtually clones of one another. They were done in the early 90s, and then there's also Station 16, which was famously done beneath the 9th Avenue Water Tower, which if you're there when ice is melting in the winter, that's a, a big boom. So you can see that all of those stations are there, and they're not going away. We're doing everything we can with facilities maintenance to, to keep those stations up, but even little things like, and I shouldn't say little things, even things you don't necessarily think about. We have more women in our staff, and the, the sleeping and shower facilities need to be upgraded to reflect our modern workforce. I mean, it's things like that that you don't think about unless you're right in the thick of it. And Chief Stanley has to consistently remind everybody, because when we're, when we're balancing the budget, you know, Finance and the City Manager have to, you know, have to take a hard look at those things, but the practical reality is that those, those are real needs, and they're not going away. So you'll see them, and they're towards the middle to end of the 10-year. I'm sure Chief Stanley would be more than happy to move them up, but we've got this little thing called City Hall that's sort of the, the pig and the python type of thing that we've, we also have to address. So I just wanted to point that out, that if that facility study that Mr. Urban referred to earlier is going to be crucial for the Council to be able to plan for, literally for the next decade.
Well, we're going to get a working elevator next year.
Some people think that's a conspiracy by Mr. Fitzpatrick to coax you into the City Hall, but that's just rumor, so.
Well, it was nice, we did get to see the senior center, though, so that's all right. Finance Director, anything more from, from your space that you want to share or make sure that we talk about tonight?
Ferno Avenue was the main item in the to-be-determined, so if you have any suggestions or recommendations for that item, otherwise I really did not have anything else other than answering any questions you guys have.
The only other to-be-determined one that I was wondering about was, I think it was Farmington, where my funding sources, last page of funding source. Yeah, half a million for Farmington Workforce Housing. Obviously, we had that discussion a little bit ago with some ARPA stuff. It's a priority. Council, Council already voted to acquire the property. So in terms of, you know, whether it's cash on hand that we have or any other funding sources, you know, we didn't talk about, I know, because not really tonight, but, you know, the general fund that we have or the, you know... but, you know, the general fund that we have or the, you know, undesignated fund balance we have, it's an appropriate use for, for a land acquisition of that kind, especially with it being a priority for us. Is that, is that your thinking that we may end up having to go that route to get that completed?
Yeah, we're going to have to identify some sources. Um, right now, we are working through the engineering, um, so we can get bid documents and start to, you know, drill down costs a little bit further. Uh, right now, this is our best guess based on the, the level of detail we've gotten for information. As that process kind of proceeds, we'll be able to get, you know, a little more specific. Um, but yeah, we're, for that project to come to fruition, be able to spend some of the, um, other dollars that we have allocated for the project through, for example, block grant, we got to make sure we have enough to finish it, so we don't kind of waste those block grant dollars.
Sure.
And as Mayor mentioned, this would not be a good item to take out debt for, because it's mainly in land held for resale, which you're not allowed to take out geo-debt for. Um, so the other items that was discussed was the fund balance or the leftover ARPA money. I know that was one direction Council had given, that if there's any project that couldn't spend the ARPA funds, we could direct it towards this project. So, it was one of those, there's multiple options out there, so we left it as to-be-determined at this time.
And just as we get closer to October, November, you'll give us more guidance?
Correct.
We'll determine it by then. I mean, that's, that's probably one of the, the ones in the to-be-determined category that we, we can't just sit on. That is something that Council's giving us direction on, so we'll get that one done.
And I'll give my same response I did to Ferno last year. I really want this, but show me how we're going to pay for it and, and I'll be happy.
I, I'm glad to hear there's some other interest. I think that was maybe my thinking last year, why I wasn't super excited about it, because there weren't any kind of businesses on the hopper, but if there is one that's interested now, I think I'm, I'm much more capable to wanting to get that done before.
Yeah, there's at least, excuse me, uh, two parties right now that are interested in property that the Ferno extension would greatly impact.
Yeah, and we're probably going to need neighborhood meeting from a planning standpoint, so that, uh, the residents, the neighbors there are aware, because that, that industrial park, that part of the industrial park has been not used, um, and so it's getting closer to the residential area. So, I'm sure people will be shocked to hear that that's an industrial park, but it's been an industrial park for, you know, over 20 years, so. But we'll, we'll do a neighborhood meeting so that we, uh, can show them what's, what's going on there.
All right. Anything else, Julie?
That is all that I had.
All right. Council, anything else from you guys? Mark, anything else from you?
No.
Next workshop, uh, end of August, I think you said the 28th?
I believe so.
Wednesday, correct?
Wednesday, the 28th?
Yes.
Uh, five, five o'clock here, same place, uh, and that's when we'll get into early projections, if my memory serves me from the past couple.
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, everybody, for your attention tonight and with that, we'll call the workshop closed, um, and then Council will take a few minutes break before we, uh, convene and then to go into closed session.
Sure.